Good afternoon Patriots out there in Frederick County. This is Dana B. With Kent G and Charlie Market. We're with our buddy Christian Marshalliski who is running for the Gainesboro School Board. We are the Mountain Patriots. And our job here in Frederick County is to try to connect as many people as we can. Uh, we do know that, that there's uh, elections and so forth that are going on this year and most people don't. They, they, they vote with what somebody else told them rather than doing any kind of research and most people are used to that. They read the headline or whatever the case may be and they make a decision from there. We thought it was more prudent to be able to bring people on live, be able to ask some questions. You get to know who they are, who their heart is, uh, the God they follow and so forth. As we all know, our Lord and Savior is here to help us out. So, uh, before I get started and we, we get into our conversation today with Christian, I want to tell you a little bit about Mountain Patriots. Mountain Patriots is three years old. As of May 23rd, we meet every Monday night. There's probably, if you put us all together, close to a hundred of us all together. Uh, we do meet Monday nights and one of the most important things that we felt was uh, imperative for people to understand is our political system. So we're going to have a fun day of civics 101. And it's not a basic civics. It's just having your uh, elected leaders or people that we put in the, the Chair of Responsibility Force, like the delegate, the sheriff, the attorney, uh, uh, the Commissioner of the Revenue and so forth. Come out to our WakeUpWinchester.com, Health and Comfort, Health and Freedom Conference, which is on June 28th at the Millwood Fire Hall, the Bingo Hall. And we're going to have a great day with excellent speakers. Go to WakeUpWinchester.com. You'll find all of our videos there and you'll find more information about that and I'll cover that a little bit more as we go along. But I want to welcome Christian here to our podcast today. Appreciate you taking some time out of your busy day. I know you'll work your tail off. Plus you have a family and I'm going to turn this over to Charlie because I know Charlie and, and actually I'm going to turn it over to Kent today because we're going to do things backwards. We're going to shake things up a little bit and have some fun with this. So Kent, it's all yours, my friend.
Well, sounds good. Sorry. I appreciate it and good afternoon, everybody. Uh, Christian man, it's good to see you again. Um, I got the chance to meet you. I want to say it was two weeks ago. Um, I don't even know what day it is half the time because it all bleeds together, but uh, it was, it was good to see you. Hats off to you, sir, for being a young guy, uh, getting into this realm. And uh, man, we wish you the best. We wish you the success. And uh, we got your back behind you, uh, moving forward. You're going to learn a lot in this business. And uh, and like I said, man, hats off to you. But uh, we know a little bit about you because you came out on that Monday. Uh, but could you tell everybody else, uh, can you give us a little bit of information about your background, uh, and yourself, uh, outside the world of politics? Just being a regular guy.
Um, I'll start off, I'm a father, I'm a husband, uh, older brother, grandchild, you know, uh, I'm a family man and uh, above all, I'm a God fearing man. Um, I do, I'm a project manager, uh, for a construction company here in Winchester and uh, I guess now I'm a politician.
How old are your kids, Christian?
I have a five-year-old daughter, uh, name's Eleanor and I have one on the way.
I take it that's why you're interested in the school board, huh?
Of course, sir. You're going to protect my ladies, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
So, uh, did you, what, what got you to the point where you're willing to stand up and step into the arena and take on uh, the responsibilities on behalf of all the rest of us?
I think, uh, it's the, uh, I started becoming a complainer like a lot of people in the county are and uh, anytime I start finding myself complaining about something, I find that I need to be the change and uh, I think, you know, if the worst, the worst case scenario is I don't become a politician, for goodness sake. I mean, you can't really lose either ways. So I, uh, decided that throughout all this crap that I keep hearing and we, you know, we all, we all hear it, we, you know, in our community, the outrage that the public's under right now with a lot of the politics that are getting forced on our kids. So for me, I, you know, I, uh, went into the interim, uh, election, I guess you would call it where the school board elected uh, the replacement for Frank until we had the election.
God rest his soul. What a good guy. I'm sorry, Christian. He, what a great guy. We helped Frank get elected in the first round. Great guy. We're all going to miss Frank. We are. God bless him.
So I, uh, I saw Frank actually at Walmart. That's what sparked this whole thing, which is, it's a God thing, of course. And uh, I walked into Walmart and Frank walked in. I wanted to go greet him as I usually would when I did see him out in public, you know, and he was having a tough time talking. He'd just recently gotten out of the hospital from the stroke and uh, he made a comment that you should run. And uh, I've just been shooting, shooting for the stars ever since, you know? So I came in second when they did the preliminary election and uh, that confirmed to me that I had something going there. So.
We were impressed when you came out and talked to us the other day. Plus I've gotten a chance to spend a few hours on the phone with you on your beliefs and what you think about and, and what you're happy about in schools and what you're not happy about in schools. Uh, Charlie, what else you have? What else you'd like to know?
Well, I'd, I'd ask you, um, um, about your thoughts on the current, uh, school board and the actions they've taken. Uh, some of the, some of the thunder that's going on that, that you spoke about. Uh, tell us where, uh, where your thoughts are in, on the, the current issues the school board is facing.
Nope. I think you froze. We've been having some freeze fun today. Freeze Frank.
Yeah, I'm in the middle of a park with a hot spot. So that's never good for you either. Can you guys hear me?
Alright, now, now we got, we kind of got you back here.
Sorry, man. I'm in a park with a hot spot. So it's, you know, I'm trying my best, man.
I'm glad you're doing this in the, in the middle of a workday at lunch. I mean, that, that shows dedication.
Hey brother, whenever, whatever opportunities I got to get my name out there and, you know, I appreciate the opportunity. But I'm sorry, Charles, what were you asking me?
Yeah, um, your thoughts on some of the issues that are before the school board now. Um, things like, uh, uh, Kent mentioned DEI, um, indoctrination versus education. What does the focus need to be of the school board today?
Uh, I mean, all of those things that you just listed are political uh, topics, you know, like that's, that's something that grown adults in the public sector should be focused on, you know? I couldn't care less if McDonald's goes DEI. That's not my business, but uh, education has nothing to do with what you look like or how you, you know, dress or, you know, there's like pretty basic principles when it comes to education. So, um, as far as the, the school board that sits, you know, I think it's kind of, you know, they're nice enough people, I guess you could say. Like I've never had like, I've never been like, look at this jerk, you know? But at the same token, um, I just, I see a lot of catering and I see a lot of let's hurry up and get out of here. You know, there's, there's a lot of, there's, there's a lack of integrity, I think, with a lot of what they, the decisions they make. Even with some people that I would particularly say I'm, I'm a fond, you know, I'm fond of that are on the board. Um, people cater and that's something that I'm wanting to bring to the table. I had a, uh, not to get off topic, but I had a, uh, gentleman that, my local town in Jessup, Georgia, um, there was a, he's a, uh, he's part of the Chamber of Commerce over there, I think is what it, what his position is. Either way, I've known him my whole life. And uh, we, he's been kind of mentoring me on an outsider perspective, you know, just to keep my values from where I come from, you know? That's what, what I reach out to him for. And uh, he made this comment. He's like, just remember you need to learn how to count to four. And that's just, I still don't think that's good advice because really to me, if I'm one out of five, if I'm one, one, one against two, or whatever it is, you know, one against six, whatever the number is, you know? To me, if, I'm going to do what's right, you know? I'm going to be unpopular. I'm sure a hundred percent you guys are going to get, hear a lot of crap about me. I'm going to be extremely unpopular. I'm not going in here to be friends with anybody. Um, I'm going in strictly for the reason of protecting the children and I'm protecting the public's children like I protect my own.
So is that be called your passion?
Amen.
That what, that's what makes you get up in the morning?
Of course. Yeah. If it was just me, I'd be sleeping right now.
I do have a question because you and I had a nice discussion about this the other night and I'm, we're just starting to look into this. There are so many topics in Frederick County that, that we have to, from data centers on. We were talking about metal detectors last night. Okay? Um, and Charlie, you probably heard a little bit about the metal detectors that they want to put in and, and um, uh, he, he works with somebody, I won't get into names and so forth, that was kind of opposed to us spending too much money on a high school. You know, they were actually fiscally responsible. We had a great conversation last night about the medical detectors and, and um, uh, let me put it this way, a lot of us don't even realize that that is an issue right now, Christian. So I'll turn it over to you and what your thoughts are. You know, because we looked at it both ways last night, correct?
Yeah, yes sir. Yeah, yeah. And that's something I do. I, I'm big on, you know, I don't want to get caught, you know, tipping my, my, my bucket one way or the other. I like to be very steadfast in what I'm, my decisions are. That's just, I've always been that way, even when it was unpopular for probably people I talk to now. I was, you know, I've always been down the center and look critically to everything. But one of the things that I, there's just no excuse for, it's just unacceptable is regardless of who's the bullet plan aim, or am I losing you guys?
A little bit, but you're okay.
You're back.
You're back. You're here.
Okay. All right. Just making sure you guys froze up on here. Um, regardless of what, whose fault or whose money or I don't know enough about the topic to give you guys a true explanation of what's happening. Maybe you guys can fill me in. You guys are more tapped into me. But from what I'm, yes, sir, from what I'm hearing, the Board of Supervisors are saying that the school board has the allotted amount of funds and that they don't want to give an extended amount of money to them for that one topic. But regardless, all I keep hearing is the reason that all these schools don't have metal detectors is money. Has nothing to do with who's got it and what it's going to. It's money. And to me, I think I've made a, I made a comment to you Dana when we were talking, morality and money are two different things and they, they almost never go and they never intertwine. So, you know, to me, putting money over our children, I, you know, I respect the Board of Supervisors for trying to be a good steward of our dollar and trying to, you know, watch over our money and they're making tough decisions and there's big fights about money. A school being built is one thing, literal protection over our children is another. So I'm, that topic on, I, like I said, I need to get more information to know exactly that I'm standing on the right ground completely, but regardless, all the perspectives I've heard are about money. So.
And what are you hearing about, what are you hearing about the, uh, the metal detectors in school?
Well, was that a question Dana?
Yeah, about the, because we were talking about the metal detectors. They want to put metal detectors in these schools.
So what are, Christian, what are you hearing about the metal detectors?
Uh, that's what I'm, so what I'm hearing is that there's a couple of things I've heard, but probably the most like consistent that I'm hearing across the board is that the Board of Supervisors shot down the funding for the metal detectors for reasons either that the school board already has allocated funds that they can use for that. Or it's a basis that they're, they didn't document how they're going to spend the money properly. I don't, it's, it's all about money and I understand that maybe I'm, I'm not the most well-rounded in uh, tax money per se, but regardless, somebody needs to put their foot down and say, look, we gotta get this done. So.
It, it may be the way the Board of Supervisors is treating it is that, uh, they're not the ATM. They give you an amount at the beginning and you have to prioritize your stuff inside that amount. So you might have some trade-offs within the school budget that you have to make in order to get metal detectors.
Okay.
I mean, that's just a, a guess on my part.
No, that makes sense. That makes sense because this whole school board thing is, this whole fourth high school's been, it's, it's been a fun ride, you know? Kent, what else you have, my friend? You, I, you're the one with the, the youngest child on here and I know that, uh, you're a champion of the anti-trafficking, saving kid. You know, watch out for them. Check your car doors, be prepared and make sure they're educated.
That's a hundred percent and I definitely want to get hit, uh, I definitely want to get back on that in a, a little bit later, but uh, Christian, can you tell us like, so what, what is the position you're running for, number one? And then can you tell us what that position responsive, responsibilities are, uh, for folks who don't know?
Um, for, from what I understand, once again, I'm not the most well-rounded. I'm going to be kind of jumping into the deep end with what my responsibilities are. But what I, from what I understand, I'll be approving fund, you know, different types of funding packages that go to certain allocated tasks, whether it's boilers or, you know, a roof is leaking it, apple pie ridge. We just got, I'm on the CIP advisory program already. So I do have some insight on what the actual capital improvement plan is. But uh, they're also, you know, there's hot button topics, like they have the flags in class that all have to, you know, work on. Um, it, from what, what I see in the Gainesboro District School Board seat, I, my task will be prioritizing my district and making sure that my P, I'm speaking for my people. I think that's the most important thing that we get away from. Like, I feel like all the politicians that have went on the school board at this point, nobody even talks to them anymore. Like there's not a wide open, you know, place for them to go talk to their representative. So like, there's no reason that, um, you know, like for example, if I, in Gainesboro, if all the people that are walking around in Gainesboro and they're pissed off trying to figure out what what's going on with the school board, then I'm not doing my job. You know, so that's, you know, at least what I personally want to bring into the responsibility that I don't see as part of the responsibility now is just being transparent.
There you go.
When we go into that dark room in the back where nobody knows what they're saying, I get to bring it back out and tell the public what they're saying, you know? Like that's to me, the most important thing.
Yeah. My, my biggest advice and, and you'll see this, especially when you get into politics, it's very dirty. Um, so, um, you know, have a trusted circle of, of close people that you can rely on. And um, you said, one of the magic words I like is being transparent. That is a big key into getting people to trust, uh, you and what you're going to do because that's, that's going to say it right there. And another one of my favorite words that we don't see a lot and hopefully we start seeing is accountability.
I hate to cut you guys off really quick, but I got a guy that's just like doing his job, weed eating beside me. And so if you don't mind, we could either pause it or I can just walk with the camera over to another table now here, you know?
Go ahead, walk. We can talk.
Yeah, walk and talk.
Little unorthodox situation here, but.
We don't want to, we don't want to stop the guy from weed eating. Um.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not mad at him. It's just, it's getting a little bit closer to me. So, you know?
I got you. But here's a, here's a young guy that's trying to run for school board, uh, brand new at it and is out of here. Not only is he, uh, working, but he's taking his time in the middle of the afternoon to try to figure out what he's got to do to become better at it. This is not an easy job, folks. A lot of people are scared to death to, to, to show up. Um, Christian, one of the things you're going to run into is a bunch of what are called armchair generals. And then the ones that really don't show up except to yell at people. Okay? Usually that's what you get at, at any one of these meetings where people are yelling about what they didn't get as opposed to being able to work together. So what are your ideas on being able to work together with the other school board, uh, members? And also with the allocated funds that come from the, the Board of Supervisors, what are your ideas on being able to be nice and work with the other school board members to, to get the wrong books out of school, to make sure that the kids are safe? What are, what ways do you see yourself working with the, the, uh, the school board? And we're going to be seeing Dr. Hummer. We're going to be putting some words in here for you.
Right.
How do you see yourselves working with those guys?
I'm a, you know, be, as long as we're, I, I.
Move a little bit because we're losing you. Getting a little choppy.
Uh, we, we might've lost them.
There we go. I think we got it.
I tried my best, guys. I'm sorry.
It's okay. You're, you're doing fine. I'm just glad you're doing this for us today. We wanted to get this out there as, as quick as we can.
So as far as working with the school board, I don't have, I've talked to almost every person on the school board. We, I don't have any, there's nothing personal in any of the, uh, you know, getting along with people topic, right? It's the, uh, I just don't, I don't think I'll have enough patience with the social issues that a lot of them do where they really are like focused on what are we going to do about this said topic? And it has nothing to do with education. Board of Education, the school boards, you see what I'm like, it's, it's the whole top person, the whole reason, pardon me, that we're even doing this and we even elect people for this position is to protect the education. Make sure that there's enough food in the schools and that's where the funding comes in, but it always circles back to the education. So we, when we're talking about social issues, like that we were just talking about DEI and the LGBTQ plus community and, you know, even with that right there, like I don't necessarily align with the LGBTQ plus movement. But the children have the right to express themselves, in my opinion. And that, but we've turned it into, it's the adults' opinion on what we can do and what we can't do. That's where I draw the line. It's, they let the kids be themselves under the parameters of being a respectful and, um, professional student, right? Like we can't just like wear whatever we want to wear. We can't just do whatever we want to do. But if a kid comes in with blue hair, I mean, he's just expressing himself. I mean, we, I feel like especially, I feel like me and Kent are probably closer in generation where that's what I feel like our generations fought for was for that, that piece of like, that's what our, our military, you know, freedom of expression, you know? But at the same token, if it's interfering with education, then that, that, that's where we draw the line. Like we, we can't interfere with the education. The education is, uh, the pinnacle to me. Like that's the whole reason we're here.
And it needs to be education, not indoctrination.
Right. We don't want the teachers going, hey, don't tell your, your, your parents about that. I'll share this with you because I'm going to hook you up with Aunt Tatis as well. She hasn't, she's a, she is one of my favorite people when it comes to education. I'm just going to tell you that straight up and she ticks a lot of people off, but I'll share this with you. Where she is down, I think it's in Chesterfield County, um, the kid's assignment, she, her, she is an 11-year-old. And the 11-year-old was told, was given this assignment that showed, uh, pain medications, things like fentanyl, uh, crack pipes, aluminum foil, how to, how to make a pipe out of, out of aluminum foil. And then their, their, their assignment, Christian, was to go look each, each one of these drugs up and the effects of the drugs. Okay? And how to do it and how to use it. But then go into the, if I have this right, uh, go into the, uh, the family medicine chest and take a picture of everything that was there and then research that and then come to school and let the school know basically, this is invasion of privacy and indoctrination. Number one, you're teaching them about drugs and how to use them at 11 years old. They have no, what kid needs to know about a crack pipe at 11 years old? It should never be brought up. Okay? Number two, it's an invasion of privacy. You don't know whether somebody's got blood pressure medicine or pain problems or another case may be. Then you've got Child Protective Services coming. There's a whole array of things that can come out of something like that. So, uh, my point being, um, and I'm sure you probably feel the same way, is let's teach these kids a skill. Let's teach them how to be polite. Let's teach them the biblical values and principles of what's going on. I don't care if you have blue hair as long as you follow the rules. Okay? And you understand, we talked to somebody earlier, uh, that's running for Board of Supervisors, um, about kids not being able to get change. Go to McDonald's, you know, and it's a, it's a, a dollar 20, 26, a dollar one and you, you give them a dollar 20, whatever, and you, you get a penny's change. You know, I'm not even doing my math right today myself, but people can't add, subtract, multiply, divide. More do they have the, the people or the parents that want to stand up and, and actually a lot of them don't want to pop in. We've been working on this stuff. My wife and I have been working on the school stuff for years now. So, uh, when, I guess the best way to put it is, um, how can we turn the school board back around? Cause I know our chairman and our, at large and a couple of them have really been pushing on getting the garbage, the trash, the drug books, the LGBTQ books, the anti-Semitic books, the sexual garbage that's especially out of our, you have a young child, out of our younger generation. Do you, do you have an idea on how to work with them on this? And what are your feelings on that?
I have had some ideas about it. The one thing about the books is it's a tough subject because, you know, I really believe more in parenting over the teachers, you know, for, you know, I, I don't feel like the school, um, supersedes the parenting, right? So like, like the, the school's not there to babysit the kid or to teach it, um, teach it what's right and wrong, unfortunately. Like we're past that point. That's the issue. Like of course, I'm sure when Charles went to school, there was a right and wrong class, right? Like there was like, when you, you, if you screwed up, you screwed up bad, you know? Like there wasn't a, um, there wasn't this like.
And mom, and mom and dad found out.
Oh yeah. And you were in front of the principal and you shook. And then there was detention. Oh yeah. Or you got paddled by the teacher. You know, like whoa.
Detention used to be miserable to me, but it's, and now they act like it's almost like you're torturing the student for putting them, that's the part for me is there's a hard line for me where I, we've gotten away from, um, discipline in, in general. Like there's just like a, like the kids, we're so worried about them dropping out and like the legal issues and we're so, like, there's like, it's all about money now.
And their feelings.
The whole program, yeah, I'll tell you this right now. The principal of my daughter's school, which I won't name names or anything. Every time I talk to her, I'm getting the, well, she didn't use soft hands and she didn't use warm feet or whatever they use. And they're talking to me, they're talking to me like that. So finally, because I'm sure no parent's ever done this. I don't, I think I killed the whole relationship with the lady. Um, I said, ma'am, I am a grown, I'm a grown man. Just talk to me like this. Like you don't have to, I don't, I'm not going to think any less of you if you don't use your fake talk. I don't, I can't stand it. I really, that's the one thing with politics, I'm probably going to be terrible at is I just can't. I can't get on a microphone and go, hello, my name's Christian Marchalovsky. It's nice to meet you guys today. Like I just, it's, it's disingenuous. It's against our immoral principles and the Christian faith. We're, we, we aren't, you don't, you don't live a lie. How miserable is somebody going to be when they, they think the Christian's the nicest, just most polished guy ever? And then they see me at Walmart and I'm yelling at some, uh, you know, clerk at, at Walmart because she didn't give me my change back, you know? Like, like that's, you, you're setting yourself up for failure. So, and also, um, I've, as far as the, the social issues and I, I, you know, don't want to get too far off track here. My brain moves in multiple different ways at the same time, but.
We'll follow you.
Yes, sir. Yeah. The, um, the main objective of school, let's just put it that, I'll, I'll just kill that whole conversation right there. The whole objective of the school is for them to learn and to become. The whole objective of the school is for them to learn and to become working class citizens. That is the whole purpose in what we created the whole Board of Education for, or the Department of Education, pardon me. We created that because we're like, we need a set Level. And do I agree with that Department of Education? Of course not. Just like you were talking about with the, them like showing the kids drugs and stuff. Whenever I was in school, that was dare. We do, like, my generation does more drugs than any generation. That didn't work clearly, you know? So The Department of Education, they They've limited, they've actually taken our, our schools and they've dwindled them down to like the most synthetic little drop of education. Where the kids are like, just getting pushed through. It's like a daycare program now. It's not even School. And then you also have to deal with the other part where now teachers can't even deal with things in their own classroom. So then they're taking the parent who's working nine to five jobs. And then they're calling them and saying, you need to come pick your kid up or whatever the case may be, because they can't even discipline the child without you being around anymore. So there's, there's a lot of mess going on, man. I'm sorry, I went, went off on a million things there, but that's What's going on in our county. You know, there's a billion things going on all at once.
I love it. You, you've, you've got the uh, the pulse of what's going on and, and that's really good. Uh, I wanted to ask a question. You said you're a project manager and I've been a project manager. And a project manager is somebody who juggles a lot of balls, Works really hard at communications and is also a problem solver. Um, how do you see those skills that you have in your day-to-day work helping out in the school Board uh, that you're, you're running for? Or in the schools general?
I will hope that I'll be very involved in the school being built, the fourth high school. There's a lot to be unknown to be in what, what I'll actually be able to do until I get into the position. It's kinda like Trump, you know, he never knew what being a president was like and till he had to appoint 10,000 people, you know? I don't know quite what I'm gonna do the day that it starts, right? But What I'll use is just every talent that I have so far and It, you, like you were just saying, you balance so many things as a project manager and you are a problem solver that This is, this, I don't look at this campaign as a um, As a uh, how do you say it? Is this as a race, like a typical Election race? Like, I look at this as, I gotta get this point to this point to this point and then we have the election. Like, I'm looking at it just like a job would be. It's a, the structure of a construction job. Like, you gotta get your permits, then you need to get your, your subs lined up. We need to get them scheduled. Then we need to stack and layer all the subs so that it flows properly. And then you got the cra, the, you're like, you, you were a project manager, I believe that we talked about. That then you have to be able to deal with the punches that come too, cause that's another part of it, you know? Like today, I just got a call from my countertop guy and he's like, hey, man, I'm gonna be three hours late. You know, so you, you just, you have these little things and then it sets your plumbing back and then you can't, you know, so It's, you, you just gotta balance a lot of different things and I think that's something that the school board has to do a lot. I mean, we gotta listen to Some of the Most irrelevant people talking to you half the time that don't have any idea what's going on, but you have to take them Just as serious as the person that's coming up making a valid point. So There's a, you know, as far as my skills as, as project manager, a hundred percent my people's skills are That's probably what's gonna carry me the majority of the way. Just being able to conversate with anybody and then um, Just my, my experience in getting things done. I'm not gonna, I know how to get things done. I just, it's something that I'm good at.
So you're not a sit on your hands guy?
No, that's why I'm running for school board out of the blue, like, like, you know, and everybody around me is going, why are you doing this? You know?
And the answer is, you care about the kids.
It's not like you have nothing else to do.
Right.
Yeah, I got way too much actually. And then we're starting uh, You know, my, my daughter's in a million things. She, you know, sports, she's about to start cheerleading now, you know, so I got a lot, you know?
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, mine's doing the same thing right now. We're in a cheer, we're in a cheerleading um, over in front, we, we live here in Front Royal, so we're with Appalachian Athletics. And she just made the team. Uh, so that's a big Shift in gears into our priorities as well, but I think it's a great thing. I wanted to ask you, cause I'm not familiar with Uh, your position or your process. Um, but for your position that you, you are running for, you do have a campaign process. Uh, when did you start campaigning for this position?
I mean, uh, when did I come to the Mountain Patriots?
Wow, so, so, okay. Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, so.
Funny thing is too, I'm the only one that's running right now too, so clearly I'm ahead of everybody, so.
Hey, take, hey, take that to your advantage, you know, and uh, and you wanna steamroll and keep moving forward, but I was gonna ask you this. Uh, how's your process going right now?
I'm trying to problem solve all I can, but I still got a bank account to make, a website to make. And then I got uh, you know, then I got my, I have my brother, he's gonna be running my finances for me. Because I just can't do everything, you know, like that's the biggest thing and money's probably the easiest thing to screw up in this whole process, I'm finding.
So when,
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, when do the people get to vote uh, for your position to get you in? Like, what, when's the deadline?
November, it's November fourteenth or fifteenth.
Okay. You got a little bit of time.
It may be fourth or fifth.
The first one.
You know?
June, I think the first one is June, the primaries are June seventeenth, correct Charlie?
Yes.
And then the, the election is with the fifth, November fifth?
Think that's right, yeah.
I'm just trying to, I mean, there's so many dates that are happening. I do have a question though for you, Christian. You know, President Trump has always talked about the money following the child. Uh, since we started Mountain Patriots and since COVID hit, There's a lot of friends of ours, and I know Kent has considered this too, so I wanted to chime in on it. Is it worth having your kid in school? Okay, or homeschooling them? And um, we're looking at a lot. Now, it's not in the big beautiful bill. I mean, we, we've got a couple more months for this stuff, but I think uh, we're gonna see where the opportunity is For the money to follow the child. And we've got people that are paying their taxes and it supports the school system, but at the same time, They're paying for That child to go to school. So what are your thoughts are on, on the money following the, the child? And what are your thoughts on a, a lot of people and what they're doing right now is homeschooling?
Yeah, so I mean, one thing my wife has really wanted, she's talking to me a couple of times about, should we go into homeschooling with, You know, said social issues that are going on.
Right.
We have, we have them outnumbered. That's my big thing is they work for us. We have them outnumbered, so why would we? We've already built the schools, we've, we've hired the staff, we pay the staff, like, we do all these things. How much sense does it make? And this is just my own opinion. This isn't, I'm not trying to make anybody feel guilty if they're going that path, but of course, you do your thing. Um, but Holding these schools accountable is more important than just running off and saying, I'm not putting my kid in there. It's like, it's like quitting to me and We, the reason that they've gotten away with it so long is that all the people that Have a, have a strong opinion, don't tend to say it to the right person. And that's a huge, you know, I'm, I could be ignorant for thinking it, cause I am a fighter at the end of the day, but you know, to me, My wife, like, I, I'm a street smart guy. I'm not an educated super, like, I, The education I have is YouTube videos and Wikipedia pages, you know, like, that's my, My biggest part. I've read probably like 12 books in my life, you know what I mean? So it's, to me, If they aren't educating our kids And then we take our kids out and we put them in a homeschool, there's still kids that aren't being educated.
That's a good possibility that. Look what happened during COVID. They lost two years.
Why it's quitting to me is you're still, you're still putting somebody's kids In a bad spot that can't afford this. I will tell you, there's a random topic that I just found out about last night from a family friend of mine. And I would like this to be on, on a page, cause I'm finding out the NREP Or not NREP, sorry, pardon me, the public preschools. I, I keep mixing these up for some reason, cause like I said, I'm not from here. Um, private, public schools. I mean, public, what the heck am I saying? Good lord. Public pre Ks, right?
Yeah.
They are Declining students because their parents make too much money. Can anybody in this town explain to me how this is a thing?
So there, so if you make too much money, you can't get your kid in preschool?
My friend makes $5,000 more than she should. And they're telling her, whoops, screw you, you gotta go put your kid in the daycare. That's not in, that hasn't, that doesn't even have a structured education system in a pre K. It's literally like, you're telling her she's gonna go to some private place that's just gonna feed her kid quinoa and Salad and tell them about soft hands, you know, and.
Back up a second, because this is really interesting to me. You're, you're, because we're, we, we try to follow everything. So we learn A lot of stuff from other people. So you're saying, because somebody is over a tax bracket, let me see if I get this right. Somebody's over a tax bracket by a few thousand dollars, they are not eligible literally for a A, 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 a government or A community-based preschool, they have to put their kid in daycare.
Yes, sir.
So they have to take them out of a structure and pay for something that's not structured.
Right. And then if you can imagine, $5,000 a year, Five thousand dollars.
Not cover, does not cover daycare.
Well, of course, no, it doesn't. And that's what I'm getting at is like, if you're only 5,000 over the amount, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is like, that is not a significant amount. Regard, I, I'm also not one of those people that think that doctors' kids shouldn't Get free lunch. I think all the kids should get free lunch, the amount that we pay for lunch. I know this is a, a unpopular subject. But the kids, I watched, I guess they can't do this anymore, but when I was in school, If you didn't pay your lunch, if your parents didn't pay for your lunch, you get a sack lunch. Like, who, what, who does that? Now we're turning our school into a business. Who the hell does that? You see what I'm saying? Like that, so that's what I'm saying is that all these decisions are being made about money. And it's just shocking to me. Maybe it's just my ignorance in a lot of this stuff and I'm just coming in defining it. But if they start telling me that money is more important than the kids, then I might go up to Governor Youngkin, I might go to, I might go to Congress. We're only two and a half hours from DC over here. You see what I'm saying? We gotta do something about this. I, I, and that's the type of stuff that I think I would be More fit in the school board for is I'll actually go, I promise you, I'll take three weeks, three days off of uh, work and I'll go to Congress to find out Who I need to talk to. That's the project manager.
Because you end up like Aunt Tatis. She took a couple of days off and she's been doing this for four years. It's like, wait a minute, I didn't get my point across. And the next thing you know, that's what she's doing full time and God bless her husband for supporting her with that.
Yeah, right. So There, there's that. And then I just found out that uh, when I was at my daughter's graduation uh, at her school, They said um, Or one of, one of our other family friends came up, she's got a severely autistic daughter.
Right.
She went to take her up to NREP and they said they don't have anybody qualified to, to take her. I'm like, what is going on? What are we talking about, dude? I mean, this is, What is NREP and why can't they take them?
What, but what is, what is NREP?
I guess it's some uh, school for dis, disabled kids maybe. I'm not, I don't wanna speak out of turn if somebody else knows.
All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna help here because we wanna bring this not just to, to you, but to all of the other folks that are on the school board. And this is part of the reason we're going to see Dr. Hummer. Um, We know that when, when Charlie and, and Kent and I were growing up, I think the autism was rate was at a one in 100,000. Then it went to one in 10,000. Now it's one in, what is it, Charlie? One in 31?
Thirty-one.
One in 31. What is happening with the food? Number one. We know what's going on with the food. That's a whole other conversation we can have another time. What's happening with our food? What's happening with um, um,
Medications.
The medications. You know, we've had a couple of people come on here and say, you know what? My, my daughter or my kid moves around like Dana does, you know, when he's six years old, watching the clouds. That does not mean that I don't, I'm not absorbing it. I learn differently. Okay? But then the teacher comes in and says, in order for your kid to be here, they have to be on Ritalin Or something. And you're going, wait a second. So you wanna medicate our kids and that's gonna create problems later on down the road. So you're looking at the education, not just of the children, but you're also looking at the education of the parents with the food, the food additives. The uh, I, I follow Children's Health Defense, which is RFK's juniors uh, stuff. A Dr. Sheila Fury, she will be on tomorrow. Okay? And I'm gonna make sure that everybody has that, 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 that video. Um, what's going on with the food? What's going on with the thighs? What's going on with the chemicals? What's going on with the shots? What's going on with the vaccines? What's go, what's going on with the air? What's going on with the water? Why aren't the kids being outside learning About the outdoors, okay? Or, or breathing fresh air. I mean, And then you have the high school problem where they, they're putting kids in trailers. We feel at Mountain Patriots and I, and I kinda might be speaking out of turn, but I think these guys agree with me. We're tired of watching our government tax dollars go to a whole bunch of garbage that's just trying to kill us and our kids. That's what it comes down to. That's how Mountain Patriots started and we have more days behind us, right Charlie? Than we do in front of us. So we gotta do what we gotta do now In order to be able to make sure that you and Kent's kids and the younger generation has the opportunity, the mentorship To be able to move up the ranks and save this great country that we have right now. Charlie, what do you think? Is that about right?
It, it's right on. Um, we're, we are an educational ministry, underline the word education. And that's how we fit in uh, we're looking at Not just supporting schools and students, But educating the parents and educating the grandparents. There's a whole lot of us that don't understand a whole lot of everything.
Right.
So it's a target rich field.
What is it? We the unknowing led by the unwilling or doing the impossible for the ungrateful?
That's it.
You know, when you think about it. Kent or Charlie, do you have a last question for, for, for uh, Christian before we wrap this thing up and we get it out there for everybody to hear and see?
I got one more for him.
All right, buddy. I love doing this. Christian, thanks for doing this, buddy.
Thanks for having me.
I know you're, I know you're kicking off on this within the past 14 days, but have you experienced any negative impacts during your campaign?
I don't know if I should talk about this publicly or not, but just because I shouldn't is why I'm going to. Um.
You could plead the fifth if you want.
Nah, yeah. Well, probably, it, it's really not necessarily to me. I don't know the guy, but I'm being attached to the Ludwig Company. I'm not sure. I know some people have, some conservatives have a good view of them. Some conservatives have a bad view of them. Regardless, I'm getting, I just wanted to be known publicly that I have zero backing. Actually, Mountain Patriots has backed me more than anybody has. So you, you guys have seen all the backing that's been given to me. Um, and I don't want a lot of backing. I think I talked to Dana about that. I don't, I wanted to be genuine. I just wanted to be, there's no, nobody can be to blame or to be at, you know, Held, held high for.
Or, or you be beholden to anybody.
No, sir. Right. Yeah, right. I'm, like, to me, Even people are saying a team, like, I, I like my friends. I don't know if I wanna bring them into this mess. You know, like, I'm kind of at a point where I might go knock on every door by myself and I'll put every sign out by myself. I'm, I'm really Um, this is my, my deal. This is, and when I say it's my deal,
You're doing it.
This is my arc that God's throwing at me and he's saying, you know, You need to, if you're gonna, you're gonna sit around and complain And you're gonna, you're gonna say things in, you know, in, in public against other people and say things about certain names, Then put your name in there and see if you could do better, you know? And maybe I just, I, I mean, I don't see it happening, but Maybe I do just become the worst guy in the county and I'm a, you know, I'm the guy that everybody hates, you know, but Regardless, if I don't put my name in there, it's uh, it's all, all that crying and complaining for nothing, you know?
Right, well put. Well put, you know?
There you go.
You can't fight the battle unless you're in the arena. And thank you for stepping into the arena.
Absolutely, yeah, the man in the arena. Charlie, you have any last questions for Christian and before we uh?
No, I think uh, um, unless Christian, if you have any last thought you wanna share.
You know, how can people help you? Do you need help with signatures? Um, what, what way can, can people jump in and gain sparrow or around Frederick County? Because we're trying to make this, We're trying to connect to everyone. Are we gonna be able to do it? No, but if we're 60 or 70% successful with that, where people are working together, yes. So what can Mountain Patriots or anybody that watches this video, This podcast do that would help you out, whether it be door knocking, uh, putting stuff out for you on Facebook? What's your website? Do you have a website? When's that coming? What do you wanna call it? You know, things? You know, things like that, so that we can get this out and because you're only 14 days into it and I appreciate you doing it. But let's, let's give you a platform. How do we do that? How do we help you?
Um, a hundred percent more than anything, just talk about me. You guys just like, anybody watching this? Just get my name out there. I'm not from here. So that's, that word of mouth is more important than anything. Um, if there's a, I, I do have a website coming up. I messed up on a Facebook page last night because I was tired and you know, screwed that up. So I won't even drop that right now. I gotta do some editing on that whole entire, I gotta delete a page and then make a, you know, it's, it's a whole mess.
Yeah. Yeah. I did that last week myself.
Uh, look, man, it, you know, tech is, I'm, I'm pretty hip to it, but I'm not, I'm not an IT guy, you know what I mean? So especially making a campaign profile. I mean, that's a whole different thing I've never done before. So I got a photo shoot coming up. I'm going to throw me a suit and a tie on and I'm going to get, you know, get dressed up a little bit. So we, you know, make our, make our people look a little bit better and, um, I'm going to get a website built. I'm in the process of working on that with GoDaddy right now. So that's coming in the future. Like I said, the best thing I can do, or you guys can do for me right now, before I get too invested is help me get some signatures, talk to people. Um, and if you guys want to add me on Facebook on my personal profile for now, uh, it's Christian Marchalovsky Jr. Um, it, I'm pretty easy to find. I'm probably friends with somebody that's a mutual friend than you, you. Um, and then Dana.
Add you to the Mountain Patriots link too.
Yeah. I was about to say, if you, if you find my profile too, if you, you want to throw that into the video, that's, I don't have a problem with that. And then that's even more personal. You guys want to know my whole, well, you know, whatever reality Facebook is, it's not my reality, but you know, you guys want to know who I, who I am, what my family looks like and go on, go ahead and check it out. There's nothing polished in there. It's, that's who I am. And, um, I mean, as much as it is, it's a fake reality. So you know what I mean?
I found, I found you, Christian. You got, they got you down as a digital creator. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I did that for the, um, what's it called? The, so you can, you can see who's looking at your stuff, et cetera. So.
All right. I'll add you as a friend. Is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds great, bud. Yeah. Everybody that wants to be friends that, you know, I don't care, even if I don't know you at this point, just, you know, add me and I'll, I'll be posting stuff like this, uh, podcast, and then I'll also let everybody know. You know, as soon as I get any, as, as I'm growing, I'll, you know, if I get a new profile page, I'll, you know, like an actual campaign page.
Yeah.
I'll throw that on my own Facebook profile. I'll, and then I'll kind of probably move over to that. And then, you know, so it's not all jumbled up with my own personal life stuff. So.
Lot of stuff you've accomplished in 14 days, my friend.
Hey, brother. That's so, you know, I try to be as.
And raising a family at the same time. I'm, I'm, I'm proud of you for stepping into the ring, you know, a lot of people.
I also went to Georgia just this weekend too. So I've been, I mean, I've been, I went from Mountain Patriots on Monday of last week to this right now, you know what I mean? I'm getting a little bit wore out, but I, I made sure that, that vacation was worth something, you know? I knew I was going to get burnt out on doing this. So.
Man, reach out, uh, use us as a valuable, uh, tool of resource. Uh, you need anything, questions, life issues, whatever the case may be. And reach out. We're more than happy to help you out.
Yes, sir. I also, if there's anything else that I could ask anybody in the public to do, just one last thing. Please, if anybody is any person of faith, if you guys believe in what I, what I am and what I do, please pray for me. Pray for me, my family. Pray protection over me because I'm about to go into a spiritual realm that I'm not used to. There's snakes all over the place. And there's not a lot of faith-based people that I'm dealing with. So you already know that they can be manipulated. You know, they can be manipulated spiritually, should I say? And we, I mean, we can too. All, all four of us can do the same. It's, that's how it, it's just a lot harder for us when we have Jesus on our side. So.
Amen.
That, that above all things, I could care less about money. I'll figure out the money. Uh, you know, it's not something I'm scared of is I've been in financial issues before. I'll figure that crap out, but you know, I can't ask for enough prayer and, um, yeah, just keep me in the loop.
Absolutely. That, that is a great, great way. The, that, that comment, you can't go, you can't say a better comment than what you just said. You know, just pray for me. And we are an educational ministry and we try to stay on the up and up with everything. Or some people are going to come and knock us, oh, that's, there's Mountain Patriot Ministry people. Oh, yeah, whatever. We know who's on our side. You know, we walk with the Lord. But real quick, I just want to point out on, this is our website. Um, it's, you can find us at wakeupwinchester.com. You'll see over here, you can see all of the, the, uh, uh, podcasts that we've done. It's really easy to find. You're going to see the Frederick County Board of Supervisors up here, Small Business Freedom Alliance, we add school board meetings to it. We're seeing Dr. Hummer next week. Make sure you get your tickets now for wakeupwinchester.com Health and Freedom Conference. Can't say enough about it. That i- if it wasn't decent, we wouldn't have been doing this for the eighth time. It is not a way for us to make some extravagant amount of money. As a matter of fact, we usually lose money, but we gain friends and we help the community and that's what this whole thing is about. So I want to thank you, Christian, for taking the time. Kent and Charlie, you're always, we are the three percent. We have a good time with this. And without that, without anything else being said, I'm going to turn it to Charlie. And he's going to hit you up, Christian, with the Mountain Patriots prayer. We have our own prayer. We have our own credo, our own mission. And Charlie, if you would lead us in a prayer, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Dana, and be happy too. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful world and this country that you've given us and the Patriots who are willing to care for it. Thank you for inspiring our founders to create this beautiful republic. Please help us to keep it, to keep it as the aspiring place to live. Please give us the wisdom to do the right things, the common sense to judge wisely, the energy to never give up and your unending grace in which we take comfort. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Folks, I want to thank all of you. Christian, thanks for taking your lunch hour today to do this with us. You've got plenty of help. You've got a lot of support. We're going to try to help you out any way we can. Charlie's a project manager. I'm sure you can reach out to him as well. Kent, hey, you got, your kids can do backflips together at, uh, cheerleading and gymnastics.
We'll have to get them together, man. We'll have to get them together.
And come out any Monday night. Folks, without anything else to say, I want to thank you all for being here and I want to tell everybody to have a blessed day. Tune in next time for Mountain Patriots Educational Ministries Podcast. God bless.
God bless.